Yeah. We're gonna go ahead and start. The hybrid piece is not on, but we're gonna go ahead and begin anyway. Good afternoon to everyone. I am Sharon Green Middleton, Vice President of the City Council, Representative for the Sixth Council District, and Chairperson of the Economic and Community Development Committee. This afternoon, the committee will hear three bills, 22-0221, 22-0246, and 21-0113. In attendance, we have members of the committee. Councilmember Mark Conway of the Fourth District, Councilman Ryan Dorsey of the Third District.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Odette Ramos of the Fourteenth District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Robert Stokes.
Councilwoman.
Councilman. Councilman Robert Stokes of the Twelfth District. Thank you, Councilman. And Councilman John Bullock has not arrived yet, but he will be here momentarily. And we also have a sponsor of one of the bills, Councilman James Torrance of the Seventh District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Representing the Council President's staff. Usually, on the hybrid, we have Nikki, but we'll hold off and wait. We do have Office of the Mayor's Staff here, and that's Nina Themelis, Deputy Director for Government Relations.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And also Sophia G., also representing the Office of the Mayor's Staff. Let's begin with Bill Number 22-0221, Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two-Dwelling Units in the R7 Zoning District, Variance 2315 Utah Place. For the purpose of permitting subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two-dwelling units in the R7 Zoning District on the property known as 2315 Utah Place, Block 3426, Lot 022. This bill was introduced on April 4th, 2022, and the bill is sponsored by Councilman Torrance. Councilman, would you like to comment about this bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Committee Members. Councilman Torrance of the Seventh Council District. This bill is being brought by behalf of a constituent who is doing a residential conversion in Reservoir Hill. This actual conversion has community support with a letter from the Reservoir Hill Association. They also have signed support letters from residents in the neighboring properties as well. With that being said, I'm here in full support of this bill.
Thank you, Councilman. And we also have Member of the Committee, Councilman Bullock of the Ninth District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
The committee will now hear from Agency Representatives. We'll start with City Solicitor's Office.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hillary Ruley for the Law Department. We approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you, Hillary. Planning Commission, Martin French, Representative from Planning.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Members of the Committee. At its regular meeting on May 19th of this year, the Planning Commission considered this bill. The Planning Commission reviewed a staff report, which I hope you also have copies of, which recommended amendment and approval of this bill, and adopted these findings, specifically that according to the provisions of Sections 5-406A and 5-406B of the zoning code, the proposed use would not be detrimental to or endanger public health, safety, or welfare, would not be precluded by any other law, including an applicable urban renewal plan, would not be contrary to the public interest, and would be in harmony with the purpose and intent of the zoning code, and meets all criteria for approval as specified in Section 5-406B of the Zoning Code of Baltimore City. And the planning staff report in this bill made note of a need for two technical amendments to the bill, which are basically friendly amendments. One is to delete the word "variance" from the title of the bill, as there is no variance to be authorized in the bill, and there is no variance required for approval of this use. And secondly, to correct the block-lot reference to State Block 3426, Lot 23. The bill is introduced, referred to Lot 22, which is not this property. Sub to that, the staff reviewed all of the findings required by the zoning code, and the Planning Commission agreed, after hearing public testimony, that this property met all the requirements of the zoning code for the conversion to be approved. The Planning Commission also noted that there was neighborhood support for this bill, and specifically that this particular property was actually designed originally to be a two-dwelling unit property, and therefore, in fact, the use is highly appropriate in terms of the historic context of this bill, of this property, excuse me. I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody may have.
Thank you for including the findings. Any comments from committee or questions for Mr. French? Thank you, Mr. French.
Thank you.
I also want to recognize Member of the Committee, Councilman Antonio Glover of the Thirteenth District. He is online at this time. Next, the Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nina Themelis with the Mayor's Office. The BMZA stands by its report and deferring to the recommendation and report of the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Nina. Department of Transportation, Liam Davis.
Madam Chair, we stand by our bill report, which is no objection. Thank you.
Thank you. Department of Housing and Community Development.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Stephanie Murdock, Director of Legislative Services for DHCD. We stand by our bill report. We do not object to the passage of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. The Baltimore Development Corporation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The BDC is favorable on Council Bill 22-0221. Thank you.
Thank you. And the Fire Department?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Kim Washington, BCFD. We have no objection to this report.
Thank you, Kim. And the Parking Authority of Baltimore City?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Parking Authority does not oppose.
And your name?
Tim Von Stutton.
You said Tim?
Yep.
Do committee members have any comments or questions? Okay, the committee has received communications from the Upper Utah-Madison Neighborhood Association, a letter of support signed by community residents. We also had findings. Are there, do we have any public testimony signed?
You can ask him.
Any public testimony here?
I'll sign the sheet.
Okay.
Sorry.
And I see we have Erin DeGraffery from the Council President's Office here as well. Okay, do we have President Bradley Harden? Yes. Would you like to come up and testify?
Yes. My wife and I are the owners of the property.
State your name.
My name is Bradley Harden. I'm the owner of the property, 2315 Utah. I just wanted to note, I'm not sure if it's relevant or not, that the property will be owner-occupied, and we do plan to rent the basement apartment at below-market rates and accept housing vouchers. That's sort of the purpose in going through this process. I don't know if there are any other questions.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
And we had Martin French. So is there anyone else present that would like to testify on this bill? Okay, we're gonna move to see if there's any hands raised for public testimony online, and we see no hands raised. And no callers. Okay, do committee members have any comments or questions? Hearing done. Testimony regarding the legal standards and findings was presented to the committee, and there are amendments to consider for this bill, and the Planning Department has briefly mentioned or talked about the amendments. Is there a motion to move the amendments?
Second.
So moved by Ramos, second by Conway. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Is there a motion to move the bill?
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Ramos, second by Conway. Chair Middleton, yes. Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Conway?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Glover? Wait for a response. Councilwoman Ramos?
Yes.
And Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
And Councilman Glover, if you can hear me, can you put your yea or nay in the chat? Because you cannot be unmuted. Or if you'd like to send a text, you can do that as well. Okay, no response, so we're going to say absent on that one. Okay, the next bill, Number 22-0246, York Corridor Business Improvement District Establishment. For the purpose of York Corridor Business Improvement District Establishment, for the purpose of creating a community benefits district to be known as the York Corridor Business Improvement District, specifying the boundaries of the district, creating an authority and providing for its rights, duties, and powers, providing for the section and composition of the authority's board of directors, providing for an administrator for the authority, mandating financial responsibilities of the authority and the city in conjunction with the operation of the district, providing for the assessment, collection, and enforcement of a supplemental tax to be collected by and for the authority, specifying the city's role in maintaining and enhancing existing services, encouraging the creation of partnerships among the authority, the city, the state, the federal government, and property owners not subject to the supplemental tax, designating the Board of Estimates as the agency charged with reviewing and approving various matters relating to the district and the authority, providing for the renewal, expiration, termination, and approval of the district and the authority, providing for a special effective date, and generally relating to the existence, operation, and control of the York Corridor Business Improvement District and Authority. This bill was introduced on June 13th, 2022, and this bill was sponsored by Councilmember Conway, and I'm sure Councilman Conway has comments. I know, Councilman, you have been working on this diligently for a while, and I know that you're glad to kind of see this come to fruition. So, your comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate you having to read all that. So I'm really excited to bring this bill forward today and eager to continue working toward the culmination of years of work by hundreds of neighbors and businesses and property owners along the York Road Corridor in my district. The York Road Corridor is in many ways the beating heart of the Fourth District. It's home to strong local businesses and vibrant communities on its east and west sides. It is one of the most traveled gateways into the city, with CityLink Red, the busiest bus line in the state of Maryland, transporting nearly 12,000 riders from Towson to downtown Baltimore every day. Recognizing the importance of the corridor, in 2015, the York Road Commercial Corridor Vision and Action Plan's very first recommendation was the creation of a business improvement district. As many of my colleagues who have a bid know, bids and their companion, community benefits districts, can be game changers in founding services like cleaning, greening, safety initiatives, business promotion, job creation, and finally, organizing business owners and local stakeholders to advocate effectively and apply for grants and other funding sources. As some of my colleagues in this committee all also know, this is the second effort to create a bid for the York Road Corridor. While the previous bill passed in 2019, due to a unique number of factors, the property owner vote did not reach the supermajority threshold for passage. In three years since our initial attempt, we've seen even more reason for an organization to advocate for the interests of York Road's commercial properties and businesses, including a global pandemic, new businesses, and a regional transportation initiative, just to name a few. Over the last few months, we've done drop-ins at every business. We've sent mailers about the bid to property owners and hosted social events with property and business owners to talk about the advantages of the bid. I'm confident that thanks to the incredible organizing of the York Roads business, of York Roads' business leaders in partnership with my office and our dedicated organizer, Sarah Saponas, we are well positioned to exceed that 58% threshold this time around. So I'm happy to answer any questions from my colleagues, and I look forward to hearing the agency reports. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And before we begin, I just want to quickly go back and say that Councilman Glover has joined us, and looking in the chat, he did vote yes in the chat on Bill Number 22-0221. So just wanted to make that a matter of record. And we also have joined, Councilman Costello from the Eleventh District has joined us as well. We're gonna go ahead and start with committee, agency representative reports, and we'll start with the City Solicitor's Office.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. The Law Department has approved this bill for form and legal sufficiency. I'm Michelle Toth on behalf of the Law Department.
Thank you. Department of Finance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pedro Ponte, Assistant Director for the Department of Finance. We have no opposition for this legislation. We estimated minimal impact of passage at this stage of the legislation, and I'll be happy to answer any question you may have.
And BDC?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Salaf Omar with BDC. We stand by our bill response and stand by favorable.
Thank you. Could you say your name again?
Salaf Omar.
Department of Real Estate.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Casey Kelleher from the Department of Real Estate, and we stand by our bill report and do not oppose this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from committee at this point? Okay, the committee has received communications from the following. I think it's important to make this a matter of record as well, and I apologize if I pronounce a name wrong. So Sarah Chepinis?
Saponas.
Saponas. Accompaniment Consulting has a support letter. The York Corridor Business Improvement District has a support letter. Govins Elementary School has a support letter. Terrence M. Sawyer, President of Loyola University of Maryland, has a support letter. Jonathan Friedman, owner of Be Moore Kitchen, has a support letter, and Ray Davis, owner of Flight Restaurant and Bar, has a support letter. And we do have someone present that has signed up to testify for public testimony, and that's Ray Davis. Yes. Would you like to come up and give testimony on this bill? State your name, who you represent, and you can give your testimony.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
For those who don't know, I always say good morning. That's all.
Afternoon.
Didn't mean to put anybody back by that one. So my name is Ray Davis. I own Flight Restaurant at 5723 York Road. We've been there for eight years now. I'm also the Chair of the Bid Board, and I'm sorry, my notes are in the bigger one, but it died, so I'm trying to see if I can see this. But for a lot of reasons, myself, as long with, along with many of the other Board members, as well as business owners along the corridor, we would like this to proceed and carry on as we want to get this done, because it will provide us a lot of opportunities with the neighborhood. It will allow us to unify the neighborhood in general and the corridor from the north to the south, extensions of the corridor, allow us a much greener and safer corridor, which will extend the foot traffic and the enhancement of the neighborhood. It'll also allow us to achieve a lot better funding and opportunities for the corridor. So for these and many other reasons, this is why we would like your support here.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you for your time.
By the way, I think I've had your lamb chops, which are very good.
Thank you, Councilman Middleton.
And I think that's it for public testimony. We're checking now to see if there's any calls or hand raised. No hands raised at this time?
I think folks are having issues with the audio.
Okay. He says he thinks folks are having issues with the audio.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
We don't see anything from this end.
So I see, so Sarah, Sarah Saponas, she's on it.
So we do have Sarah online.
So Sarah, Marty, and Joe.
Is she unmuted? Can you, Sarah, can you try to unmute yourself?
I'm gonna make, who is this? Sarah, I'll make her a panelist.
Okay.
So she can speak.
Sarah, we're gonna move you up to a panelist so you can testify.
The three people noted are Marty, Joe, and Sarah.
And also Marty, I see.
Hello, everyone.
All right. Sarah? Are you there?
I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes. You can go ahead.
Great.
Say who you are and give your testimony.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair and Members of the Committee. Thank you for having me and for considering the York bid legislation. My name is Sarah Saponas, as we know, and I currently serve as the organizer for Corridor Businesses in partnership with the York Road Initiative and the Fourth District Office. I'm leading this work as a consultant now, but I was actually formerly the Director of Govins Elementary Schools After-School Program and Community Center, so my experiences and passion for the corridor run deep. I'm here to speak in favor of establishing the bid, and in particular, to offer a macro perspective on the businesses that are in consideration for the bid. There are approximately 350 addresses that fall within the bid boundaries, with close to a quarter of those exempt from the bid due to being residences, nonprofits, government buildings, et cetera. The remaining properties are owned by about 125 unique owners, and the statistics on those owners are interesting to consider. They're nearly equally split between being businesses and owners immediately on the corridor, local to Baltimore, or in the state of Maryland. There are actually only 13 out of the 125 who are out of the state. So what this means to me, as I've been doing this work, is that we really have an audience here really ripe for engagement in our city. We're not talking about, you know, half of the businesses being corporate entities down in Texas. These are entrepreneurs who are already here, already invested, and hoping to stay in Baltimore and on your corridor. The bid will support them in being here, staying here, and thriving here. Additionally, I think it's helpful for the committee to think about the financial expectations that'll be placed on business owners with a property tax surcharge. As we know, that's the mechanism of a funding for a bid. The average corridor property value is around $500,000, which means an average tax of about $1,000, and that comes out to almost $85 a month. This is certainly not a negligible amount to a business's bottom line, but when you hold it up alongside the proposed services and the tangible benefits of the bid, it's clearly apparent that this is a worthy investment. I have had the chance to interface with 125 of the 125 owners. They've at least received mail, and the majority of owners have had a chance to talk virtually or in person along the corridor, and I have not, at this time, had any opposition to the bid. Of course, there's been healthy discussion, but overall, we are seeing a lot of excitement and engagement about this proposal. So thank you for hearing this testimony and reviewing the legislation today. We look forward to a more unified, vibrant corridor and hope you can move us closer to that today. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, and we do have a support letter from you as well. And I do want to recognize Nikki Thompson from the Council President's Office is also online here. And I think the next speaker we have advanced up as a panelist, Marty Bacon? Marty, are you there? Marty, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, my name is Marty Bacon. I'm with Van Dyke and Bacon Shoes. We've been in Baltimore, our family's been in Baltimore doing business with Van Dyke and Bacon Shoes since 1938. We've been on the York Road Corridor since 1951. I've been with the company for 46 years. So as far as this bill is, I'm very hopeful that this bill can help, help the businesses in the community on the York Road Corridor. I have one thought, I'm very hopeful that all this works. I have one thought, it's well needed. This is very well, much needed. I just have one thought, though, which concerns a lot of the businesses on the corridor, is there's been a lot of initiatives that have gone forth, and what happens if the talk can't be walked? In other words, if everybody wants to keep the place clean and keep the, keep the wrong people off the streets, what happens if it doesn't get done and the businesses aren't happy? Is there, is there something, is there a way out for the businesses not to be taxed if you're not actually getting things done? But I can say that's a small negative. I'm very confident that there are, there are things that can be done when things don't go right. So that's the only thing I have to say. I'm excited, truthfully. I think it's gonna, I think you've got a good crew here, and I'm hopeful that it's gonna be, really enhance the corridor.
Thank you for your testimony and your long-serving business to the residents of Baltimore as well.
Thank you.
And the sponsor of the bill, Councilmember Conway, just wants to make a comment on a few things, and then we're gonna go over the amendments to consider.
Sure. Yeah, Marty, thank you for coming to testify. Good to see you coming out to support it. Regarding your question about the ability to make sure that it actually does something and is effective, we don't want to end up with a tax that is then ineffective. We have an opportunity every four years to review, and if folks don't think that this is an effective mechanism to promote businesses in the corridor, we can vote it down. So just want to make sure that, you know, there is a way out if we decide that this is not working.
Thank you. And are there any questions from the committee at this time? Hearing done. Councilwoman Ramos, yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I think this is a great idea, obviously. I live in Charles Village, so we have the Charles Village Benefit District, and that has, and it was the first benefits district in the city, so we kind of learned the hard way on how to do this. I saw on the Law Department report, Councilman, that this is being established under the, under the benefits, the Community Benefits District statute, so that there isn't a separate statute for business improvement districts. Is that correct?
So, yes, this is being established under the, the part of the statute that it creates, benefits district. We're calling it a business district because it only applies to businesses for now.
So the boundaries are just along the businesses?
Only businesses, no residential, and of Only businesses, no residential, and of course, no nonprofits.
Well, right, they can't be taxed anyway. Right, right, okay. Thanks. I just wanted to just clarify what that, because we, I didn't think we had a separate bid. Right, okay. And, you know, the way that we've done this in Charles Village is that there, you know, there is a reauthorization process. You know, every four years, you have to be reauthorized, so there's always a chance for folks to come back. The budget is always approved in a public manner. There's a lot of public input, so that's the benefit of the bids. Well, mostly because there's, you know, you're gonna get a special tax, and so if you're gonna pay that tax, you should have, you know, more input. So, I mean, I think it's a great idea, and glad to see it move forward and happy to support. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the committee? And so, yes, there are amendments to consider for this bill. Councilman, you're gonna explain to us the amendments?
So there are two amendments, and I believe the amendments were sent out to everyone.
Yes.
The first would strike line 24, strike nine to five, and substitute nine dash three on the same page. Essentially, what this does is, it says that the Board does not determine the tax, of course, the Council does, to simplify the language here. And the Second Amendment just allows the Board to rename itself, should it decide so in the future. So, you know, should there be any question about whether or not it wanted to be called a Benefits Districts or anything like that in the future, that could change if necessary, and the Board could simply make that decision. So those are the only two amendments.
Thank you. Any questions on the amendments? Is there a motion to move the amendments?
So moved.
So moved by Conway, second by Ramos. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Is there a motion to move the bill?
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Conway, second by Ramos. Chair Middleton, yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Yes, Conway?
Aye.
Aye. Dorsey?
Aye.
Aye. Glover?
Yes.
Yes. Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. And Stokes? Thank you. This bill will also be moved to second reader at the next council meeting. Thank you. Were discovered to be functionally impractical or otherwise in need of modification to obey previously unanticipated consequences, and generally relating to the zoning and land use laws of the City of Baltimore. So this bill was sponsored by the Council President for the administration, in particular, for the Planning Department. And this bill was introduced on August 16th, 2021. A public hearing was held on March 1st, 2022, and that hearing was recessed. And then we had work sessions that were held on May 10th, May 24th, and July 26th of 2022. And do we have any comments or questions from committee at this point? Hearing none. Today, we will begin with Title 18 and work, oh, we're gonna begin with Title 17, and work our way through the zoning tables. Damarra Woods, would you like to begin now?
Thank you, Madam Chair and committee members. Let me ask, how far back in Title 17? So we went through all of Title 17 last time. Did you want me to just kind of go over, I guess, a summary of the amendments that Councilman Costello is preparing to submit?
Yes, so just kind of do a review of 17, since we did that. And we do, committee members, we do have Councilman Costello here of the 11th District that has some amendments to offer.
Sure.
We're gonna discuss after your overview.
So let me, so Title 17 is a mixture of quite a few things that we're seeking to change based off of, I guess, we're at two and a half years, maybe, of feedback from when we rewrote it. So there is the introduction of, you know, the new sign type for painted and mural signs, and then we're adding in some definitional clarifications for ground floor and above-ground floor, which will actually be pretty pertinent to Councilman Costello's upcoming amendments, and clarification on what's a roof sign versus a wall sign. If it's 30% or more above, you know, the wall, then it's considered a roof sign. In addition to that, we're actually adding in kind of a special section that gets to sign splitting, where if you can take an aggregate amount, you're able to split the sign. We have precedent for that already in wall signs, so we're expanding that. If you have more than one primary structure on a lot, then you'll get to do signage for each of those buildings. You don't have to worry about nickel and dime, and you'll get all of your allotment. In addition, clarifying signage in PUDs, we know that's a big deal. And also with that, we have the areas of special signage control. You may be familiar with those, that we just had the Noha District that Councilman Costello, you know, supported and brought through. But the ASSCs can actually go into a variety of zoning districts, so we're making a way in this legislation to incorporate that into a PUD, if you so choose, and mirroring that language in the ASSC section, which is Subtitle V. And then we'll, actually, we still have to go through the tables, so I'll go through the tables in order when we get to that piece of it today. So just to kind of summarize the amendments that you will be seeing, I know they're currently being drafted by Legislative Reference, so they're not yet ready for primetime. But just to back up, we've had conversations with an entity that is a C1 zoning property. And C1, if you, you know, know the city, is our neighborhood commercial, so most of the properties are actually pretty small. That's your rowhouse, neighborhood commercial, you know, districts, your main streets, things like that. Every now and then, in C1, you will have larger buildings. They are not the norm. But because of their size, because of their scale, they will require, you know, more signage. So we want to make a way to be able to do that without ruining the sanctity of the signage for the smaller buildings. Because we know that's also an issue for neighborhoods. They don't really want to have over signage, so how do you balance that? So we worked with the Councilmen to come up with a set of amendments for that. And in addition, as I mentioned, we've been working on the Noha signage district, which is the North Harbor for the ASSCs, which has allowed the billboards downtown. So we know kind of the trajectory of billboards in downtown and kind of placement. So we have an amendment that would support that as well. So the first thing that we'll talk about is, just a quick summary, in the special section that we're adding, that I mentioned, where you can do kind of sign splitting. If you have an aggregate amount of signage above the ground floor, you can split it into multiple signs. Currently, the way we have that drafted, it does not include our C1 zoning categories at all. So the amendment that will be forthcoming would include C1, C1E, and C2. And it's really capped at splitting it into no more than four signs, where when you get into the higher numbers, you can split it into as many as you need. But in these lower neighborhood districts, we're gonna say up to four. And the other thing that we would be seeking to add, so when you look through the sign code in Subtitle IV, there are all, when you get to sign types, there's always a section that says "where allowed." This is super critical section, because this is the section that allows you not to have a sign on your house. You know, but you want to have it on your rowhouse business, so that's where this section is really pretty critical. So we're seeking in 17, 415A, to add a number two that says in the C1 and C1E zoning districts, wall signs above the ground floor are only allowed in buildings with a frontage of 30 feet or wider. So those are getting to your large buildings. You don't want the, you know, your 16-foot wide rowhouse building to have, you know, too much signage. So we're kind of controlling it there, and that would seem to work for the needs of the larger buildings, because that's where they're starting with a frontage of about 30 feet or so. And then, I'll go through kind of the table since it's not, it's not introduced yet. So we have kind of companion amendments that will be coming in Table 17201, which gives you your requirements. So currently, in C1, C1E, and, let me check, C2 is already split, so C1 and C1E, the ground floor and above-ground floor signage is combined. So this particular amendment will actually split them. You'll have, and this is already in C2 and C5, and all of that kind of mirrors what's there in the code now, is you'll have a wall sign for ground floor that'll be, we're right now proposing 24 square feet, but it'll say one per tenant with direct ground floor access, and the corner tenant is one per street frontage. What this does is allows, if you have a mixed-use building with several ground floor tenants, they don't compete over signage. They actually each just get what they get, so you don't have to go competing with the larger signage, you know, or anything like that. So then we come with the second one. This is wall sign above the ground floor, and this is a factor of, you know, your linear footage, so it's 1.5 square feet per linear feet. So if you have a larger building, you get more signage. If you have, you know, the smaller, then you get less signage. This is one per interior lot and two per corner lot. This is the one that matters the most, because this is the factor that's gonna allow you the sign splitting that the buildings need into multiple signs. So that's kind of that particular set of amendments for your C1 buildings. The last amendment that he'll be proposing is to the electronic signs, the category threes and fours. These are your really large digital signs, most likely would be digital billboards. So they're at 750 square feet typically and higher. So when you look at the code, in each of those sections, we have a sign type that they can be. So it could be a freestanding digital sign, it could be a wall sign, you know, type or something like that. We're adding an open structural framework to both of those. And what this is, is a sign that could be, it's not really a wall sign, it's not a window sign, it's a roof. So picture downtown, probably the example I'm thinking of is the Convention Center that basically has what I call an exoskeleton, like when you're driving along Pratt Street. It's just the open structure, that's what you see. Oftentimes, those are very popular for signage, and so it's in proportion, sometimes it's more like a canopy sign than a wall sign. So we are actually just adding in the provision for an open structural framework sign, which is a sign type that we have in the code. So this, again, just allows that latitude for a type that we know exists, you know, downtown. So that's that particular amendment. We don't currently have a proposal that I've seen, and maybe Councilman Costello has seen that, but I haven't seen one for that, but I know that is a building typology that we have downtown, so we just did not include that in the 2018 rewrite.
And this is all specifically downtown?
So the, the building typology could be elsewhere as far as the, you know, the framework. You don't see it often in the city, so it just depends on how the building is designed. So the open structural framework sign is really couched with canopy signs. You know, because they're in proportion, people typically do them, think of them that way, but it's not a canopy either. It's its own, you know, special thing. But we do know, and you, you see it already, a lot of times, people just hang, hang the signs, that's where they will go. So we're making room for it, because it's not a wall sign at all. And that's the extent. I don't know if there are any questions on those before we go back to the bill itself.
I had a question, Madam Chair.
Sure.
Councilwoman Ramos, oh, before you say that, I just want to kind of make this statement. So there are a number of people online via computer and telephone, and I just want to mention, we are having technical problems and are unable to mute you, so we apologize for this technicality. Go ahead, Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this, to the Madam Chair's point, it would be downtown, but it could be elsewhere. Is, it's my understa, so for instance, I'm just thinking about Greenmount Avenue, right? I have small shops around, and then I've got the pawn shop on one side, and then I've got the dollar store on the other side. Those are pretty significant buildings, but we wouldn't want them to have ridiculously large signs in a small area, and those are all C1s.
So, so it's two different, two different things.
Okay.
The piece that I went over about C1 is not related to the open structural framework amendment.
So where that comes into play is it is a sign type that exists,
but the larger digital signs are not allowed, even through an area of special signage control in the lower commercial districts. So you would not see those.
And what about this issue, and forgive me, I'm not a sign person?
Sure.
Of dividing a sign into four, I guess that would only be in areas where there's actually like four shops in a building? Is that how that works?
So it, not necessarily. It could be a building that's on a corner or a building that takes up the entire block where they actually have four street frontages.
Oh, sure.
And so they would want a sign on each street frontage. Or it could be, you know, a situation where the building itself, you know, has a name, but then there's a prominent tenant that would like their own signage, and that's part of their lease agreement, so they might, you know, have a secondary sign somewhere. So it could be any number of things that happen. We do have a few anomaly properties in the city that, you know, I can think of at least one kind of shopping center that's Zone C2. Typically, shopping centers are C3. For whatever reason, this one's Zone C2. So we have to, you know, treat it the way it needs to be treated. So this particular set of amendments would allow them the latitude that they need for their physical configuration.
But only in areas where the building is a ridiculously big building, where they have the four sides?
Where they have the four.
It wouldn't really apply to the Dollar Store, the Hermans, the Pete's Grill, you know, that kind of thing?
It, it could. So the control is where, I was mentioning, the where allowed, where those have to be 30 feet wide at least. So their, their frontage is actually pretty wide, so it's not the 16-foot, you know, or 20-foot, you know, rows of buildings. So it, it is making room for buildings that are larger, that typically want larger signage, and they typically need it. So it is, you know, it's not a lot of the buildings, but C1 starts to, in C2, that's where you start to see that transition. And we also have the ability in C1 and C2 to do, you know, mixed-use buildings that are a little bit significant in height. So we're not just thinking about existing buildings, but just kind of moving forward, thinking of new construction, where you're getting into your five-story, you know, mixed-use buildings, your six-story, so they're coming as well. So it's just making room for those typologies that we know either exist or are coming.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that clarity. I also know on Greenmount and on 30, and on the Avenue and 36th Street, which now I'm calling both of them the Avenue, so I'm gonna get myself confused, is, you know, they both have URPs, so, which limits the, the sign size and type anyway. So that would still apply. It's just, you know, you're allowing for the opportunity to have bigger signage if, if that works in that area.
Yes.
Gotcha. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And just reminding the general public that this is our fourth work session on this bill. We're not taking a vote or no public testimony. This is a work session between the agencies and the committee and council members. Are there any other questions from committee members on Section 17? And on that note, did we want to, did you want to comment on amendments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Damarra did an excellent job of explaining it. I could not have done it better. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So now we're gonna move on to 18.
Yes, Title 18. So we're on page 51 of the bill, if you're following along. So the first item that we're proposing in the legislation... So the first item that we're proposing in the legislation is for 18-206, Determination of Nonconformity. So this language, see, you've seen in Title V or variation of it. The zoning administrator or the Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals may deny any application for variance if the subject property has an outstanding notice of violation, co-vibration, or any other resolved unpaid fee, fine or citation. So if you remember back to Title V, we actually had amended language that the Planning Commission voted on that we would seek to put in. And our amendment to this is to remove C in its entirety. We actually don't, once we revisited everything, and this was discussion at the time with Katie Byrne and Jason Hessler, as well as members of the public, that this was actually not value-added. It doesn't say anything regarding the nonconformity that's actually taken care of in Title V because this is really only speaking to BMZA. And so we actually don't want to keep it. And then just kind of moving on, 18-207, Expiration of Approval. So this section is new in its entirety, A and B. So any authorization to continue a nonconforming use, density, or other nonconformity lapses and becomes void one year from the date of its final approval unless within that year, a use permit under this code and an occupancy permit under the Baltimore City Building Code have been obtained for that use. That's the first thing. Second thing, the erection or alteration of a structure for that use has lawfully begun, or the use has lawfully begun. So basically, if you've started work, then you would be okay to go beyond that one year. If not, then it becomes void. Then the new B is the Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals may grant an extension of this period or written application for good cause shown without notice or hearing. So again, this is that protection that, yes, we're saying, no, you can't go beyond the one year, but we're also giving people a chance to prove their case. If there's a good reason why it needs to go beyond that one year, then you have to go to BMZA and plead your case. So this is a companion amendment again to Title V where we are talking about the continuation of nonconforming uses and structures. So there's companion language that we went over in Title V. This one is on nonconformities. Let's see.
Are we going over our amendments too? Because I have one for page 52.
You got to use your mind.
Oh, excuse me.
I'm sorry. What did you ask?
Just, were we going to discuss the amendments as we're going? So I have an amendment for page 52 that I had submitted. You want me to explain that now, or are we going to do that later?
Is it subtitle four? Okay.
So I'm looking at the charts, right? We're on page 52, the charts.
Should we finish the text, or do you want to?
We're page 51, right, the bottom. We're the bottom of page 51.
Oh, my fault. Okay. When we get to the charts, I have an amendment.
It's just one, it's one more little tiny.
Soon as she gets through her piece.
One more little tiny. So just the expen-- oh, no problem. I just didn't want to lose this one because I know we're going to get into, I think, the discussion. So the expansion of structure for 18-403, a nonconforming structure may not be expanded if the expansion would, and we would remove in any way, just say, create a new nonconformity or increase the degree of any nonconformity, period. And so we would be removing or increase the bulk of the structure. So it just simplifies that particular sentence. And that was the last piece of the text that we had. And with that, I think, did you want to discuss?
Because the tables are separate.
The tables are separate. So, but I think Councilwoman Ramos, your tables.
And is your bill, is your amendment about the tables?
Yep. Yes.
So that was for Table 202 specifically?
Yes.
Okay. So you--
And I also--
You have, you have an amendment for another table?
Nope.
Okay, since your amendment is for Tables 7, 202, you can go ahead and speak on your amendment.
What my amendment does is takes out line 17 completely so that parking lots are not allowed on parks, period. There wouldn't be any approval process or ordinance or anything like that. And then also, line 19 would make wireless communication services approval by ordinance and not just by board.
Okay. Anyone have any questions on her amendment? We're not voting, but any questions?
On line 19, we would, wireless communication services in open spaces would be approval by ordinance, not board. Right now, it's conditional by board.
So you're saying you wanted it approved by ordinance?
Correct.
And not the--
Correct. I submitted it in my original amendments from March.
And then it was line 17 removing the parking lots completely.
So did you want us to comment, or did you want to wait until we go over?
You can comment since we're talking about this.
Okay. And so our amendment for Table 17-202 is to take it back to conditional use by ordinance. The bill, of course, shows it coming to permitted, but at Planning Commission, we voted for an amendment that would actually just take it back to the way it is in the code, which is conditional use by ordinance. I cannot speak for the Department of Recreation and Parks officially, but I do know that there, of course, outside of the proposals that I think started a lot of the discussion, I do know of other plans that are coming down the road where they would want to have parking. And we've talked about, yes, you would need an ordinance to do so. So I think they're familiar with that. What I would want to do in discussion of your amendments is to go back to Recreation and Parks and get feedback from them. And I'm not sure of Director Moore, you know, how he would want to comment, but I do know based on our discussions, we would not support removing it altogether.
Okay. And I, I know there has been, this is for the committee, there has been discussions with Rackham Parks. And we've had discussions about parking. And specifically, I think there was something with Druid Hill Park. So just keep that in your thought as we are talking about amendments and how this would affect. So it is important that Rackham Parks weigh in on this. So we might want to, when we go over all the amendments, to invite them to have a conversation about this as well. Because it has been controversy in the city with parking and creating. And since there are, it is a huge massive renovation at Druid Hill Park, that also is part of the 7th District as well. So we'll have to get Councilmember Torrance to weigh in as well. So keep all that in your thoughts as we move forward. Thank you for your amendments, Councilwoman Ramos. Moving on to the tables.
Okay. So we are on page 53 of the bill, Table 8-301. So if you remember back, one of the proposals that we have in this bill is to make farmers' markets use, just a permanent use and no longer temporary use. So in doing that, we have to add it to the table. And so our proposal right now is, in this particular table, R1A through R4, it would become a conditional use to the Board. So the availability is there. It would just go to BMZA for approval. And then whatever that discussion leads for, you know, that particular farmer market, farmers' market proposal would go forth. Table 9-301 is looking at the educational facility, commercial vocational. So we, I'm not sure if we talked about this one. I don't believe there is a text change to it. But these are our vocational programs. And what we are seeking to do in R5 through R10 is to make it conditional use to the Board. And one of the things that we think is extremely, you know, important about this is we have a lot of school buildings that are being surplus throughout the city. And these would often be really great uses to backfill and get more educational opportunities within our neighborhoods. So we are proposing that these would become conditional to the Board. And on that same table, R5 through R10, same proposal for farmers' markets, that they would become conditional to the Board as well.
And I just want to say to the committee too, we already, we did go over all the tables. And we're doing this again just to really review the text of, you know, these tables. And farmers' markets are a very important piece to our city as well historically. So I think it's important that you are adding all of this. Any questions thus far?
Madam Chair.
Right. We went over the text, and the text is part of the tables.
Right, right.
Councilmember Dorsey.
That's all. I was going to make the same clarification. We looked at some of the tables as we were looking at text that was specifically related to certain tables. But there are other tables that are in here that are not specifically related to earlier text. I have an amendment coming up for a table that has no relevant text.
Okay. Yes. Okay, so--
You guys are trying to confuse me.
It is. And I think we're on page 55 of the bill, so Table 10-301. This is the table for our commercial districts, C1 through C5. You see the educational facility, commercial vocational appearing again for C1. Then C2 would be the conditional to the Board. And then it moves to permitted, C3 through C5. And art studio, industrial, this is, and actually, we have our colleague from BDC that could probably speak more fluently on this matter than I could. But we have C1 through C1E becoming permitted. And then currently in the code, C2 through C3 is conditional by Board, and then C5. So we're proposing that all of them become permitted. And then farmers' market in our C zones would become permitted. Food processing light from conditional to the Board would also become permitted uses. So these are, you know, industries that are just really more and more prominent in the city. And there is really no need, obviously, for them to be conditional to the Board. So we do feel that they should just be, as of right, in these particular zoning districts. And for farmers' market, where we talked about texts, which ones have companion text, you'll see per 14-312, that's a U standard that we went through. And that gives you the standards. And I'm not sure if there was any questions or clarifications from BDC, if you wanted. I don't know. You're okay? And let's see.
So most of the farmers' market information is standard. So you can read through that or skip and go to the next if you'd like.
Okay. I'll go to Table 10-401. So we're on 55, and these are the bulk and yard regulations for C1 through C4. And then we're flipping over to page 56. And this literally is just DU means dwelling unit. So there is no change in the density numbers that you have there. It's just DU is they're clarifying and correcting with the addition of the symbol that wasn't included.
And GU stands for dwelling unit.
Correct. So that really is just the clarification. And then Table 11-301 is our industrial districts.
Council, Councilman Dorsey.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I have an amendment I've asked to have drafted but do not have in hand yet for Table 10-401, which is what Tamara was just referring to, the commercial districts, bulk and yard regulations.
Table 10.
It's right there, 10-401, it's the bottom of page 55, top of page 56. After the minimum lot area in this table, there's a section for, that defines or prescribes the maximum building height. And for C1, what is it, the C1E and C2? There's a, they're building height maximums of 60 feet, which is prohibitive of a fifth floor in a building. I got some numbers from some developers and architects that show that in order to be able to fit a fifth floor, you need 68 feet. Just because of everything that you need from floor to floor, and then roof trusses, and then typically a parapet on the front of the building. And so I've asked for an amendment to that building maximum height in those cases where it is set at 60, for that to be changed to 68.
Would you like to comment on that, Tamara?
Sure. This amendment is coming from the Baltimore Development Work Group, and that's where the conversation originated. And it's something that I think we've gone back and forth on even when we were writing Transform Baltimore, but it's become a little bit more apparent. And so we did, over the last several weeks, have a few conversations where the initial thought was that 65 feet was needed, and they went back and did a few more calculations and refined the number to 68. The Planning Department does not have any objection to that if the committee is fine with going to 68 feet.
Okay. Will committee keep that? You have some more comments?
I just wanted to make clear that that's for C, there are three different C1 categories. One of them is just 60. One of them, the C1 Village Center, is 40. And this would not be affected, that would not be affected by this. And then the C1E--
Is the entertainment.
Is 60, there's also a footnote, there's 60 or 100. Just so we're all on the same page about this. The standard would be, as it is now, is 60, unless you are putting housing above some other first-floor retail or other use. You can get a conditional use for, in those cases, to go up to 100 feet already if you're doing that mixed use. This would only add that, change that 60 to 68. It wouldn't do anything to the 100. Similarly, C2 is a 60-foot limit. And it does also have that 100 provision.
Yes.
It has the 60 or 100 in those. And this would only affect the 60-foot mark.
So we, of course, I think, would definitely want to see it drafted and, you know, see just how it lays out. But conceptually, we're fine with it. We did have discussions, preliminary discussions with BDW. But of course, any, you know, questions or comments will just be part of that discussion. But we don't, as it stands now, have any objection.
So Councilman Conway has a comment. And we still have to, you still have to get that amendment drafted.
Yes, I've sent it over to, I've sent the request to DLR.
For us to deal with it. But Councilman Conway?
I guess more of a question for Councilman Dorsey. Is there any reason why we, why we wouldn't change the 100 as well to add that additional buffer? Or is it not--
We haven't given, been given any information that says it's necessary. I mean, if you think about it, if you wanted to put five above one, and you've still got that 60, if you assume that you still need 68 for the five floors, then you've still got an additional 32 feet for that first story for commercial use or whatever. Or you could probably even fit two stories of commercial in that kind of span. So you don't--
Well, and part of it is, when you kick over to the 100, you're requiring other ground floor uses, so you're requiring the commercial. So we're already, we're saying, if you do this mixed-use thing, you can go higher. But where the 60 lives is perhaps you're just doing a total residential building. And-- And so we're not encouraging an eight-story all-residential building. So the sixty to sixty-eight is just really that math for what most likely would be an all-residential building. So where, where it's coming into play is, you know, again, it depends on the underlying zoning, but, you know, a developer may get a site where perhaps they are doing an affordable housing project, or maybe, you know, something that might go to CDA that does not have that component, or maybe it's forcing them to tie into something, you know, a non-residential use that they otherwise would not do or have to do. So it's just giving that flexibility and latitude that they need for the construction type that they're trying to do.
And we all have communities in our areas that are really strong about the height, the height allowable in their areas, so we have to really keep that in mind, too.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Move, continue.
Sure. So we're at the bottom of page fifty-six, table eleven three oh one, industrial districts permitted in conditional use, conditional uses. So drive-through facilities, we are proposing that they be removed from IMU two, so that's the extent of that particular one. And then farmers markets are gonna appear in several different of the zoning categories, so they would be permitted there. And the, the removal of the drive-through is really just trying to keep the sanctity of the district. So it's, you know, if you remember a while ago, it was only one IMU, now we have two IMUs, so it's really about that sanctity. And then moving to page fifty-seven is, you see, again, farmers market is appearing in our OR districts as conditional to the board. Moving to table twelve four oh two, again, farmers markets coming in our TOD zones for permitted uses. And table twelve five oh one, they're coming as permitted for our educational campus zones. And moving on to page fifty-eight, hospital zones would get farmers markets as permitted. And then gazebos is really, this is about permitted encroachments. Where can a gazebo be? It can be in your interior side yard, in your rear yard. So that's just adding, you know, that particular item. So I'm not sure where that originated from, but apparently it's a desire to have gazebos in other parts of the yard. And so we're moving to page fifty-nine, which is our required off-street parking, table sixteen four oh six. So this is changing some of the, the parking requirements for the items that are listed. So bail bonds establishments, two per one thousand would be changing to one per one thousand. And then your check cashing, instead of two per one thousand, would be going to one. Indoor movie theaters would be going to one per six seats after the first four hundred instead of one per four seats for the first four hundred. Financial institutions, one per one thousand of gross floor area plus two stacking spaces for your drive-through, so those are your, you know, your ATMs. Your offices would, instead of one per eight hundred, would be one per one thousand. Pawn shops would go to one per one thousand. Personal service establishments, one per one thousand. And places of worship, one per four persons of fire-rated capacity, and the amendment is of the main sanctuary. So it's not all the other spaces that may exist, you know, in a, a place of worship in that particular building. Retail goods establishments would go to one per one thousand instead of two. And, let's see, we are on to page sixty of the bill, which is table sixteen seven oh five, which is the required bicycle spaces. So, do you want me to read all of it?
Yeah, I'll have to.
Okay. I would say, you know, the best thing would be to go through, because there are quite a few changes on this, so is to go through, and if there are some amendments that would be proposed, we could, you know, see them and just kind of discuss them. And that continues on to page sixty-one, it's the same table. So it's quite a few amendments as well to that one. And then we're moving on to sign tables seventeen to a one, so we'll start on page sixty-two of the bill. And there are quite a few kind of changes to this one. So we are adding in, if you remember, kind of to the beginning of the discussion, that we're, for the first time, well, I guess it's technically not, but we're adding conditional to the board, signs that'll be conditional to the board. So because we're adding that into the text, we have to have the, where it appears in the table. So where we're adding it is the electronic sign category one. These are your small electronic signs. These are up to about fifteen square feet. And we're, that's what you see, is the fifteen square feet, and it's the per sign type use, so that goes back to where I said it could be, you know, maybe it's a wall type sign or a projecting type sign. So when you look at the height, width, and location requirements, you just have to look at the requirements for that type of sign there, and they get one per lot. Painted mural sign, as I mentioned earlier, that's a, a sign type that we're adding in to the code, so of course it has to be added into the table. And our R one A through R four is conditional to the board as well, up to thirty-six square feet, one per lot. That language is mirrored in R five through R seven. And then R eight through R ten, the electronic sign is mirrored as well with the conditional by board, fifteen square feet and one per lot. Then moving to page sixty-three of the bill, painted mural sign is the same, it's mirrored there, and the same language is mirrored in the row house mixed use as well as the detached mixed use. And we are moving to page sixty-four of the bill, and you see it again in C one. So the painted mural sign, you don't need to have the electronic sign mirrored there because that already exists as an available sign type in C one, but we are adding in the painted and mural sign, which switches to becoming allowed use instead of conditional. So now it's allowed, which is the A, and then thirty-six square feet and one per lot. And that comes into C one E on page sixty-five of the bill. It's mirrored there, again, on page sixty-six with C one VC, which is the Village Center. And on, once we get to page sixty-seven, a few more changes appear. So the electronic sign, and we're in C two, so the electronic sign category two is up to fifty square feet. So before, we didn't, when we rewrote the code in two thousand eighteen, we didn't have signs that were conditional to the board. Now that we have it, some things that were only for the area special signage control will just go to the board. So that ability for something in the C two, so which is where you see the ASSC only, will go to CB. So that just means it's, you can go to the board and, and ask for it. You do see an increase in signage from, you know, wall sign from eighteen to thirty. This is based on feedback from people that are doing signs, you know, they're always going to BMZA asking for a larger sign, and the pattern began to be like, oh gosh, we are, you know, a little too, too tight on what we, you know, allowed, so we're increasing.
Can I just do a quick question?
Sure.
What does ASSC mean?
What does ASSC?
Sure, that's the area special signage control, and that's, the only model that I can give is the know-how where it's legislative. And then from there, you do a sign plan.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. And page sixty-eight is, again, the painted mural sign shows up in C three. Right now, we're increasing to a hundred square feet, so C threes are your shopping centers, you're going into, you know, a lot more density and scale at this point, so you're gonna see, wanna see larger signs. So a hundred square feet, only one per lot. Wall signs, again, going from twenty-five to forty square feet. Sixty-nine, on page sixty-nine, again, painted mural sign shows up, same thing is in C three, is a hundred square feet. Page seventy, again, the wall sign increasing from twenty-five to forty. Painted and mural sign shows up again, wall sign increased to forty. And so the C five is where you start to see a few of the changes. The downtown is, you know, ever-evolving in, in the types of signs and uses, especially as our downtown is being reimagined and, and reinvigorated. So banner sign, wall mounted, which is a type of banner sign, we're increasing the quantity from one to two. Painted and mural sign shows up there, because that's a new sign type. Increasing the projecting sign at the ground floor, so the ground floor really, those are your, your small, you know, maybe cafes or something, these aren't the large ones, these are the, your small projecting signs.
So Tamara, I guess from this point on, it's all, it's all on painted mural signs and...
And changing the size or quantity.
So the, I'm sure the committee can kind of go through this on their own at this point. And then, just so the committee knows, Council Services is probably gonna meet with Tamara and we're gonna make sure that we get some kind of packet and format so it will be easy for all of us to go over the amendments and, you know, and then we probably could have a vote at the next meeting, even though I announced two, because we are moving along, so...
And I, I do know that we are definitely still working with other council people and others that are trying to get amendments in, so there may be some that might be coming your way.
And I did have a personal conversation with Legislative Reference, and then to just to kind of give him some dates of when we were gonna do the amendments. So I will update the director of that office, too, that we were really moving along, and so they can get on task with the amendments and writing as well.
Madam Chair, just to clarify, that's October, when's the next one, October twenty?
Ooh, good question. When did I say, I, I don't know why October fourth is on my mind.
Yeah, October fourth and the twenty-fifth.
Fourth and twenty-fifth.
Fourth and the twenty-fifth.
Were the two dates that...
So you want all of our amendments done by the fourth?
Really, it would be good to have them done by the fourth.
Fourth, okay.
So I will check with Ben, too, just to let him know that for those that are getting amendments written up, that on the fourth, we might be able to wrap this up, but we will definitely have some kind of format with all the amendments on it, so in one piece, so we all, so the committee will have them all.
Yeah, there's a couple of minor tweaks to the one that I submitted, so I'll submit a new version. And then I have one, an added one that I have to add, so, just FYI.
And I, I do know the Department of Planning might have one or two that we have to figure out.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
Are there any other comments or questions from the agencies that are here? And hearing none...
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I have one quick question.
One more question? Go ahead.
Uh, going back to page fifty-one of the text, we had talked about the nonconformity. I just wanted to clarify what this means. Any authorization to continue a nonconforming use, density or other nonconforming lapses and becomes void one year after from the date its final approval. Its final approval unless within that year, use permit in this code and occupancy permit under the Baltimore City Building Code had been obtained. So does this mean, going back to Tamara, the issue that I have on Twenty-Eighth Street, the, is that gonna address that issue where, or this is just, this is saying that the nonconformity, if the, if the use is not there, then a year after the use is not there, then it goes back?
Then it goes back. And I, I thought about your, your, your issue when I was reading this, and I'm, I'm not sure that it will address that, because from what I remember, and definitely correct me, with that particular issue, part of the concern was that it was not deemed nonconforming.
We still have to fix that issue, because it was deemed nonconforming, but the issue was...
The records and the vacant building notice.
And whether or not it was actually considered multifamily, because remember, the zoning code says multifamily is two, the building code says multifamily is three.
Correct.
There's a major inconsistency there. So, but what this is, is use permit under this code, and is that like in the past? Like, for instance, this is letter A in the case of Twenty-Eighth Street, you know, the, the property was deemed multifamily because it was at some point in like, a million years ago, had a use permit. So that, this doesn't give us a timeframe at all.
It does not. And, you know, that, I think that was part of the discussion that we had, you know, with DHCD and BMZA, you know, specifically on the call, was really regarding the timeline of when things were issued, as well as when things were determined to be what use, what was the last known use. So your particular issue, I think, is, is a little bit more complex than that. I, I do, you know, the, the question of what constitutes multifamily, I mean, we, we could talk about that in many different ways, but...
Inconsistent, inconsistency in the code that we have to fix.
Well, zoning code versus building code, and I'm not, you know, I'm not with DHCD or versed enough to, to know that distinction and how they look at it from their perspective. So I think we can look at this language, and maybe that's just an offline discussion that we can bring in, you know, Jason Hessler, and we can bring in BMZA for this particular to see in terms of this bill, what's being addressed or what's not being addressed for that particular issue, because it, it is more complex than this, just this language alone.
Right. No, we're gonna have to have a conversation to bring in.
If we, when we might wanna have the amend, for the amendment, when we go over all, all the amendments, just to have them there for questions...
I think that's a good idea.
Before we take a vote, if you could extend that invitation to have Jason Hessler and who else would we like?
Probably from BMZA.
BMZ, something like BMZ.
Yeah, we could figure out all of who they...
I'll be sure to take, I'll be sure to take this back to our deputy commissioner and see if we can arrange something before the next work session.
And they're, they're familiar with the issue, because we had the meeting a few weeks ago.
Yeah.
It was a few weeks ago, so...
The committee was canceled today, so we don't have a...
And Councilman Dorsey, you have a final statement?
Uh, I mean, I understand the words on the paper here. I understand what their effect is. And I also now understand they don't address Councilman Ramos's issue. I don't understand what problem they are solving.
So we have legal nonconforming uses, and they, just when the new code went into effect, if they were nonconforming and they became legal, theoretically, then if they go away, and this is where I'm gonna have Hillary probably step in, because she'll know more than this than I will, that they know, they would lose their legal status. And that is the way I understand it, but if you wanna expound...
Well, I mean, I'm sorry. Any nonconforming use that's currently operating gets to continue to keep operating unless, of course, you're a liquor store under that provision of the zoning code and you're amortized. But skipping that, everybody else gets to continue, but you don't have a right to have the ability to change to a use that is currently permitted but may not be permitted when you go to change to it. So these nonconformity changes are, you know, are generally fine, because what they're saying is, look, we've given you a year, we, you know, we've allowed you to change to something, we've given you a year to make that happen, and if it doesn't, you know, so be it. You, you've lost your ability, you know, your conditional use expires. Like, we're, we're not giving you unlimited permission to become this thing fifty years from now. It's just you get it to do it, you know, essentially right away, which with, of course, you know, some caveats that like, you know, you, if you're busy, you know, if you're one, you've started to do it or you don't quite have the permit yet, that counts. Is that answering?
Does this mean, hold on, so this means that...
Right, right.
If I have a corner store in a residential property, which is a nonconforming use...
Currently does not conform to the, yeah.
Yeah. Is this saying that once we pass this... Is this saying that once we pass this, I have to get a new permit?
No.
That just says, I want to continue my non-conforming use?
My understanding is this happens only when you are busy being a non-conforming use and you had to, you had, you became vacant, you had to stop doing it. So take your corner store, everything's hunky-dory and then the like, I don't know, whole place floods, it becomes vacant, it has to stop. It wants to con, it wants authorization to continue being the non-conforming use it always was. We're basically saying, that's fine, but you get one year and you have to meet these conditions. You either have to come and, and lawfully begin your use again, you know, you have to, you know, begin the structure alteration needed to continue. You know, you rebuild after you were flooded out or whatever, or you've gotten your use and occupancy permit. So like if you, if you go to rebuild, you get your use and occupancy permit. What we're saying is you can't say, well, this vacant building, you know, it was a non-conforming use 20 years ago, and so I'd like to revive that use?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I thought this was already the law.
I see Erin would like to weigh in.
And that's part of...
End of discussion.
Yeah, I, I was just gonna, at a, this, maybe a, a more concrete example that happens maybe more frequently where the non-conforming use will stop because somebody is selling a business or selling the property. And for whatever reason, it just doesn't operate for that year. At, at the end, when the new owner wants to restart the non-conforming use, the corner store, they will have to meet these conditions.
Right.
But they already have to go through zoning to redo the non-conforming use anyway. Are we totally saying, so for instance, I'll just pick an address, 1430 Carswell Street, 1430 Carswell Street is an R6 and at some point in time had a conditional use for a community center. And then it was not used as a community center, was vacant, it wasn't used at all. Not even, not even vacant and abandoned, it just wasn't used, right? And now they have to come back to get their conditional use. If this goes forward, does that say, does this mean that the conditional use went away? And so the only way, so the, the way that they can get back that conditional use, oh, I'm thinking conditional use and not non-conforming. I'm thinking that non-conforming is totally different. So I have another example.
So, the thing is, you, you really have to follow those three bullet points to, for it to be satisfying.
And so here's the thing, so let, let's take another example, you know, 1503 is 28th Street, right? I'll just, so it was at some point in time, a single family home. At some point in time, it was designated as two units with a building permit prior to it being rezoned, to the area being rezoned R6, right? So it technically has non-conformance, right? Because it was rezoned, et cetera, right? That's what we're, so, it was vacant, okay? And under this, it would lose its non-conformance unless they go ahead and start construction again and get a building permit.
Within that timeframe.
Within, within the one year?
It becomes void. And so the, part of the issue, and, and we'd have to go back and maybe we can playtest this a little bit more because I don't know everything that changed from the old code to the new code. So it could be in some cases that the, you know, we rewrote all of the zoning districts. So something that could have been legal in the old code, that may not be the case. It wasn't apples to apples. And so we, like, all the B zones went to C zones, some of the uses changed, what we call the uses changed. So this is really hoping to capture probably some of the lost things that are in there. And I think also, in your particular case, the, the complicating factor that does happen is what was the last known use? And what, when did our records say that occurred? When did a vacant building notice, official vacant building notice actually go on their property versus what the community proves or says?
Right.
When it actually went vacant? So, you know, all of those things become a matter of what can you prove and/or interpretation of that proof. And so this particular clause is hoping to capture some of those lost things because we have no guarantee, you know, something in the old code that, you know, maybe was permitted is now a conditional use. That may not be the case. Maybe something that was permitted in the old code doesn't even exist anymore, or, you know, is, is just written off the books. But it was legal at that time, so when we transferred to the new code, it's now legal non-conforming. But as Hillary really said, it can continue, but if they go void, then that's where their problem starts. And so that goes to the example that Erin mentioned. If you're, you know, transferring property, you're selling property, it could easily be a year. You're not pulling permits, you're not doing these things to keep it legal. But we can definitely, I think, go back and playtest it to make sure we're hitting...
So that, but under this, what it would say is that, so 1503 28th Street was at some point two units and then the zoning code changed to make the area R6 and then so that was still, it was non-conforming, but it was vacant for over a year. So they weren't, they wouldn't be able to go back to two units.
So again, you know, I, I can't speak to, but, anything officially, but my understanding was the VBN was actually showing it less than a year, so...
I'm just theoretical about...
You gave a good point, because they wouldn't be able to go back to rezoning with that example. So, yeah, this is something that needs to be fleshed out more.
Yeah, her, her example is really pretty complicated, so I think it's a good example to...
Yeah, there's a whole nother layer to it, which we're not discussing today.
But we can playtest it against that.
Just this part of that particular issue on the non-conformance is, is what I was questioning. But yeah, 20, it, that, it's very complicated.
No, I, I think it's worth, I think it's worthwhile for us to at least go playtest it and see because when we wrote this language, we did not have your issue.
Correct.
So...
Councilwoman Dorsey has one last thing.
Yeah, so clarif, for, for, for total clarification here, are we saying that right now, I can revive a non-conforming use?
That these aren't uses, these are structures, as I'm understanding it, right? The non-conforming...
Like, like I have a, I have a building in my district that was very clearly constructed. It's like a, it's, it's like a concrete block, square box. I think it even has a flat roof. Like it was clearly constructed as a six dwelling unit building. It would be absolutely absurd for it to be converted into a single dwelling unit. But in transform, it was zoned into a, into R3 or R, I think, R2 or R3, where nothing is allowed except for a single dwelling unit. And after some time has gone by, it, they, they can't get a permit for multi-dwelling in this building that was clearly built and only ever existed as a multi-dwelling unit.
Does it have a use and occupancy for a six unit at some point in time?
At some po, yeah, it always did until, until it went vacant, until it went vacant at some point. But what I'm seeing here is it's a non-conforming use that until we pass this can be revived.
So, well...
That's what happened on 28th Street.
So the, the thing that we have to go look at, and this is, I think, what we told you, Councilwoman Ramos, because it's the crux of the issue, is always when did a notice happen? What was the last known use? It's all about the time and transition rules and all of these things because when we rewrote transform, it just changed a lot of things completely. And so we have to go back because in your case, maybe something became a new zoning category. I don't know what it was before transform. And in the new zoning category, maybe you can't, because of when the property tracked, maybe there wasn't a UNO, I don't really know. But the way the code is written now, you're not allowed to do conversions, you're not allowed to do multifamily. So it's based on how the new code is written, as opposed, so that's where the interplay with transition rules, we spent a lot of time talking about that, comes into play. And, you know, when something lapses comes into play, but that's just kind of the law. But proving it is different because that means that someone, one, had a legal permit in the first place, that's not always true. You know, there was, if it went vacant, there was a vacant building notice at, you know, some point in time that everyone agreed upon or not agreed upon. I know they don't agree in your case. So all of those things matter in kind of peeling the onion. But I think it's, we'll take this time before October 4th to kind of go back and reread these things based on kind of the more complicated cases that have come to light and see how it playtests or, you know, what has to happen or not happen to the language. We can figure that piece of it out.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, for indulging me, appreciate it.
Of course.
Thank you.
And on that note, we are now in recess until October 4th. Thank you all for, then the agencies for hanging in there.